Okay, welcome everybody to the Monday, March 12, 2012 meeting of the Bradlborough Planning Commission. Welcome to the members of the public who are here and the news media. First, well, basically tonight in terms of the agenda review, as we discussed, besides the standard things that we do, I'm going to talk a little bit about the fluvial erosion hazard section of the zoning ordinance, the future, I'm going to talk about the future of that, talk about the town plan timeline, and then the two chapters of the town plan that we're going to talk about tonight are the economic development chapter and the municipal facilities and services chapter. So the first item on our agenda is to approve the minutes of February 27th, our last meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
And seconded, okay. Any discussion? I just have, you know, I'm a little dense on this overlay stuff.
It's supposed to be slightly opaque so that you can see through.
Are we supposed to be anyways?
Yeah, I'm opaque. It's transparent.
Do you have new glasses? Maybe that's why. They're very, they're very coming.
Becoming, they're becoming my regular glasses because my other ones, I can't get them to stay together, so. So, in an overlay, can I just, it's just, this is really just a point of information for me to try to remember. It's under the land use chapter discussion. It's the second bullet down on page two. Overlay would also allow the town to achieve density goals in designated areas. Can you just give me one, one sentence about overlays again that, so they have the zoning of the underlying district. By that is that the permitted uses and the conditional uses are the same. What's different?
The zoning district would have a table of permitted and conditional uses, and then there might be other reasons why you would entertain the idea of overlay. So, one example of an overlay is a PUD overlay. So what's different about the proposal for land use and the zoning ordinance this time around from the last time, or the existing ordinance, is that right now, a property owner can approach the town to have a PUD developed on their parcel anywhere in town, pretty much anywhere. And what we would be, what we are recommending through this chapter is that in fact, that's only possible roughly within the 91 Connecticut River corridor with some areas south of Route 9 between South Street and the Covet Bridge being the only other areas that were really available for PUD. Now, there's some existing PUDs that don't conform to that map that I just described, but under those conditions, and that goes back to that sentence, by having an overlay for PUDs, you could, that could be a vehicle for increasing density. Regardless of the underlying zoning district, so that could be a PUD in an industrial district or a commercial district or a residential district, but the idea would be that through the use of a PUD, you most, we would hope that there would be greater utilization of the land.
I think more generally, you could consider an overlay district as kind of a designated area where different rules might be at play. For example, our special flood hazard area, that's an overlay, and in that place, in that context, it's more restrictive.
Right.
So some of the uses are not allowed, you know, the way that you build it has to conform to what the regulations say. In the case of the PUD, it would be, these regulations would kind of be hovering over this designated area. You could choose to use them, or you could choose to go straight with the underlying zoning.
Historic districts are another example, if this design, if they're implemented with design standards or some other kind of controls, that it could be, end up being more restrictive, but it's an overlay.
I think last meeting, we were talking about the difference between the existing PUD regulations, which is kind of, anyone with property could come and kind of, let's make a deal for this new property, but if we modify those regulations for PUD, we could have more of a say on the types of uses and the areas where PUDs would occur, so that it would be according to our plan rather than according to
Randomness.
Randomness.
Which is the opposite of planliness.
Planliness, yes.
Can I ask, what kind of criteria was used to identify the areas where you would designate them as, as the overlay areas or not?
They were all lands in water sewer service area, in the new market tax credit area, easy access, I think to
Transportation.
Transportation network.
Right, and an orientation toward, you know,
North-south.
Towards north-south.
North-south corridor?
Yeah.
But not all in the new market.
For density.
No, but just a sort of a general re-orient, reorientation of development in a north-south pattern.
And in those overlay areas, then that criteria enables those properties to be considered for greater density than what the normal underlying zoning would allow?
Through the PUD process, yeah.
Yeah.
That's one thing that could happen.
Right.
But not necessarily.
It's not, it's not the only outcome.
Right, right.
Okay.
Does it, do the minutes need to be clear around that for you, Gary, or?
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
It's just a topic that came up, and I, one more time, thought, gosh, I wish I knew what that, wish I could remember what that means.
Would the, would the existing PUDs that do happen to be drifting, if you will, that are outside of those boundaries be grandfathered in until such time as what happened?
Yeah, they'd probably always be grandfathered in.
They're, they're grand, it'll be great-great-great-grandfathered.
There's probably not too many, right?
No.
Outside of the area now, there's?
Outside of the area that you're going to designate as able
That we were talking about designating, yeah, there's not too many, there's some.
Well, you mentioned World Learning and Fox Farm here in the minutes, next bullet down.
Right.
Several, I would say, right?
Yeah, it's not a huge number, and they're fairly specific to those sorts of settings, so they're, they're either campus-like settings
Institutional.
Or institutional. So, it was a planning vehicle, you know, a regulatory vehicle at the time to address those sorts of issues.
Austin School of PUD?
Yep.
Yep.
But that's within
Yeah, it's just
So it's something, so it gets in our design?
It's within the design, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the other thing that I underline here was the subsequent, under other business about the fluvial erosion hazard zoning. So, did that zoning pass seven to one? That wasn't unanimous?
That's right, oh, that's right, I didn't catch it, it was seven-zero.
It was seven-zero.
Oh, what am I saying, seven to one, yeah, seven to zero.
So that's a, that's a
Yeah, you had me sort of challenged there from the, I was thinking, I don't think there's eight people, but
Well, yeah.
Yeah, it was seven-zero.
That's a typo.
Seven-zero, okay.
All right.
So with that correction
I think that recognizes the bipolar status of, or
And doesn't the select board vote need to be the other way around? Needs to be two-three, not three-two? Because the positive vote always goes first.
Yep.
Just to be technical.
Okay.
Right.
Just like in tennis, huh?
So those two corrections.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the minutes are approved with those changes. Okay, next thing is announcements. I guess I just wanted to say that, you know, to note the passing away of Melinda Usunow, and what a loss she, her passing away will be and is for the town, and just say, send our condolences to the, to her family and friends, and so, just that.
I reiterate that, Gary, and note that just in the past meeting or two, we got information from Melinda for use in our plan.
Yeah.
Any other announcements?
Let me announce this, there's, from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, there's a planning and zoning forum on Wednesday, April 2nd.
11.
Oh, yeah, sorry, April 11th, in Montpelier, I think. Can't find it, the where, but anyways, it's the topics
It is Montpelier.
The best practices for appropriate municipal panels, preparing for variance and conditional use review, and land use case law, and municipal land use official, whatever, and elements of effective zoning enforcement. Those are the four topics.
Will that be something that the town would sponsor participants?
We've not thought of it in those terms, I think, I think, we, I haven't discussed with Brian, he may be interested in going, but I think Sue and I are not going to go. So, but if there are people on the commission that are interested in going, yeah, we can do that.
It's an all-day?
Yeah.
And lunch is included?
Well, the
That makes it a fun day.
That's right.
It's going to be that same dessert.
I can tell you what dessert it is.
You know the dessert.
Okay, any other announcements?
They must have five pieces of pie.
I don't know if this, I guess this is an announcement. I just discovered the Vermont Business Magazine, which I guess the planning office gets, and I got them out of the library to read, and in last September's issue, there's a great Q and A from the Secretary of Commerce, and I got, I think Julie, I spoke to her today, and she's going to try to get the electronic link and forward it to everybody. There's some very, I was just really totally blown away actually by this guy's expertise and all the things he says, so it's really a good thing to look at in terms of when we go to work on the chapter on economics, just some prelude there, so I just wanted to share that, to watch for that.
We ended up scanning it, and we're going to send it out to you tomorrow. We couldn't make the
You couldn't make the link?
Couldn't make the link.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, great, thank you.
Lawrence Miller is his name.
Yep.
Okay, next is other business, any other business that needs to be added to our agenda or discussed? Next thing is public comment. So this would be a public comment that's not related to the rest of our discussion points. If there's anything besides that that anyone, any members of the public would like to bring up, this is the time to do that. Otherwise, we will be waiting for those other discussions. Okay. Okey-dokey. Well, the next item is discussion, future fluvial erosion hazard section of the zoning ordinance. So this is in response to a request by Carolina that we have discussion about the fluvial erosion hazard zoning, and in part at least, where it will fit into the land use chapter of the town plan, and so we decided to have a half-hour discussion of that, and this is that time. One of the things I would just want to note is that in discussing this, in preparation for this meeting, one of the things that we, we talked about was just that, given the timeline of the town plan, which we will discuss next, we'll have a couple of month-long periods of time when we can talk about the fluvial erosion hazard language, and maybe some of the things that we have learned from our past discussions, because we'll have a warning period when we will have passed the draft of the town plan, and so we'll have a warning period between then and when we, when we have our public hearings on the town plan. So, that would be a period of time when we could talk about fluvial erosion, but I just wanted to bring that up because that's our next item after this, so. So, what Rod just passed out was the, was the proposed language in the land use chapter about the fluvial erosion, erosion hazard section of the ordinance. So Rod, did you want to talk a little bit about this?
In response to some comments from the commission at our last meeting, we went back and reviewed the text of the land use chap, the draft land use chapter, and you'll see there on page one of what we just handed out, where you see the kind of vertical line on the margin there, the left margin text is being added. So we had, already had a policy, policy number one was minimize the loss of life structures and natural resources caused by flooding and erosion, and then we added those three actions. Develop a fluvial erosion hazard section of the new zoning ordinance based on updated maps supplied by the Agency of Natural Resources, through the appropriate zoning tools redirect development to the area bounded by I-91 and the Connecticut River, which we just discussed, and incorporate site plan review criteria responding to hazard risk in the new zoning ordinance. What that last item actually refers to is hazard risk that lies outside the special flood hazard area, or as it exists now, or any fluvial erosion hazard area. So it would be hazard, hazard risk associated with steep slopes or erosion controls for driveways, roads, and accessways, amongst other things. And so, we could identify areas outside the existing, areas of hazard that are identified, you know, in relation to the stream bed itself. Then, if you turn over the page, you'll again see some added text. Basically, what it does is includes in the text of the plan, the history of the efforts to incorporate fluvial erosion hazard language in the previous zoning ordinance. That's the large paragraph there, and it explains that process, and also outlines the extent of the existing mapping. And then the last point that's important is that it makes clear that under the criteria for Act 250 review, the Agency of Natural Resources already has oversight for fluvial erosion, and so any development in Bradlborough of 10 housing units or more, or 10 acres or more of disturbance that would be reviewed by the environmental commissions under Act 250, if there's, if there's a stream that has mapped, mapping data for fluvial erosion, then that's part of the criteria for review. So that's the last comment that's contained in that paragraph. So, what we set out to do here was to incorporate commissioners' concerns that we give enough emphasis to fluvial erosion as part of the land use chapter of the town plan, and I think that might be as good a point to start the dialogue as any.
It looks like it's kind of hanging off the bottom of the page here, at the bottom of the second, it's page four, I guess.
No, there's some extra lines, and I just, it's the underlined areas that have the new language, so I just, I just, to not waste paper, just
This, yeah, that's
So that's a section there.
The text that's hanging off the bottom of four, you've already reviewed.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a memo from Sue dated September 7, and that was the meeting where we put aside our regular agenda to discuss the flood, and Sue's memo was very good, it has a series of bullet points discussing a list of items, a list of planning items that would be helpful to reconsider in the zoning and so forth.
Right, okay.
And I have in my notes that, that we would be describing the history of the action, which you've done, the benefit of flood control, and to begin again, and I think the beginning again would be the appropriate elements to add all of these bullet points, because I think the board was very much in consensus that these elements were necessary to protect the town should this flooding happen again.
What, what was the date of that?
September 7.
September 7.
So maybe we could call those points out. Are you suggesting that they get called out in the language in the town plan?
Yes, I'm suggesting they get called out and, and discussed to relate the fact that these planning goals, or these future zoning elements are, are directly related to reduce flooding and protect the health, safety, and welfare.
Okay.
Is it something that you can read to us now?
Sure. I thought you'd never ask. Okay, so as Sue says, below is a list of items to begin the conversation. Subdivision, circulation, and access design. Structures in the floodway, in other words, relocating structures
So we don't have that.
Yeah. Hazards associated with steep slope development. Fluvial erosion hazard and/or regulating in the 500-year floodplain. The appropriateness of three-acre zoning in the rural district, which we've talked about numerous times. Areas for natural storage in the floodplain. Improving existing street connectivity. Proposed development guidelines to address stormwater management directly. Integrate green infrastructure best management practices into both public infrastructure and private development to protect water quality and help prevent flooding and erosion. And that has the initials LID
Low-Impact Development.
Review and update of road design standards, and finally, revision of future land use map based on flooding.
Wow.
All good things?
Yeah, pretty comprehensive, too.
Some of those things are in here?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, okay, so the ones that are not, we can, we can drag across, yeah.
Yeah, but I just think it's important to make the link between any future land use changes and the benefits to avoid flooding.
Right.
So one of the things that I think, you know, in thinking about this, it would be good, if we're going to have a discussion, let's say between times on the, on the town plan, of what action will be taken, you know, when this is taken up by really the next planning commission, would be to, to talk a little bit about the lessons of the last effort that we made, some of which are called out here, I guess, you know, in a sense, or at least the history of it is called out here.
Right.
And again, I think that, you know, that would, that would take place possibly in June or of May, something like that, and, and none of this, including tonight's discussion, is, is intended to take the place of a full-blown, a full-blown examination of all this and discussion, of course, because this is not, that's not what we're doing, but I felt like it was important personally for me to at least be here for the last discussion of it that we had before board changeover, just because it was quite a lengthy and involved process before, so.
Especially in the lesson to learn part.
Yeah, 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 I would say, I mean, and it's going to be a different, a different effort next time around, because it's going, we, we talked at least in part about it being the whole town rather than just that one stretch of the whetstone, so, so that's a whole different thing.
I have a question. When, I'm not sure how to ask this. So, the land that, that was flooded this time around?
Yes.
And there's a difference between development in areas such as Flat Street, for example, versus out on, out in West Bradlborough.
Right.
To what level of detail do we talk about that in this plan? You know, I mean, as far as, if somebody wants to build a building on Flat Street, how do, how do we even, how does, how do we talk about that in this? Or do we just leave it sort of gray?
Well, I think, I don't have the complete land use draft with me, but we did talk about some development on Frost Street, acknowledging that it's floodplain, and that, but that the historical pattern of develop, you know, it's, it's just a really dense area right now, and that you could develop it, even though it's in the floodplain, but it's going to take some engineering and this and that, I mean
And the engineering
I don't think we, I don't think we necessarily contrast that with the further western portions, but, I mean, we've kind of attempted to say, yes, there's challenges, but done right, it can be done.
Like, like cultural intrigue, say, for instance?
Yeah, or, or, you know, having parking underneath and, you know, building closer to the road, and those kind of things.
So it's building in accordance with FEMA regulations and engineering controls?
If there was, yeah, so, cultural intrigue is a good example, so where there has been new construction along the flat Frost Street corridor that's affected by the flood, the special flood hazard area, they have to meet the requirements, and key to that is that the requirements for residential building are different from a commercial building.
Uh-huh.
So, there's some minor differences, but if that area was to be redeveloped, then, depending on which side of the street you're on, so, and whether you're in a flood, you know, whether in the regulated floodplain or not, you're going to have to meet those requirements, that's not anything that we can negotiate. The special flood hazard area that's marked on the current maps corresponds with what is called the 100-year floodplain, the 101, 100, 101, the 1% chance of an event that size happening in any year. The fluvial erosion hazard area roughly, and I want to emphasize roughly, corresponds with the 500-year floodplain. So that's a one-in-five-year chance of occurring.
One in five? You mean one in 500?
What, 5?
No, 5%.
No, it's 2, 2, it's 2/10ths of a
It's 0.5%.
No, it's 0.2.
0.2% of a chance of anyone, sorry. So, so the key there is more land is involved in the 500-year floodplain than the 100-year floodplain. It varies for reasons to do with topography and other features. The general proposition is, is that the traditional long-term The general proposition is, is that the traditional long-term land use patents associated with communities all across the state is that they have the deepest historical roots, you know, at the junction of two rivers or two streams or whatever, and Brattleboro is a perfect example of that, and that's the oldest, most densely settled, most heavily invested in part of the town. And so the Agency of Natural Resources and the state more broadly has a commitment to protecting that private property and the lives of people that are affected by that. So there has not been and would not be, I don't think, any effort to remove structures from Flat Street or Frost Street because they happen to be in the 500-year floodplain or similar actions. The question would be, over time, what standards would they need to be held to for redevelopment? Sometimes it's fairly minor, it's to do with the location of propane tanks and whether they're tied down or not and those kinds of things. Sometimes it would be more major. It could go to the question of use of the structure, so they may have to remain commercial and not be residential.
What about if they're residential to begin with? Like, let's say a bunch of those residences further up the street from Cultural Intrigue who are individuals rather than corporations or whatever, what would, how would that apply to what the threshold would be to those places going forward? If those were deemed to be within the 500-year fluvial area, where would it affect them in terms of the cutoff point at which they couldn't continue in that spot?
Well, we don't regulate in the 500-year floodplain right now.
But you're proposing to, right?
No, we're not proposing to, I mean, it's up for option, it's optional.
It's up for consideration. And so the fluvial erosion hazard area roughly corresponds with the 500-year floodplain.
If you were in the 500-year floodplain and we were not talking fluvial erosion, just you're in the 500-year floodplain, because there are a lot of properties along Frost, Flat, Williams, you name it, in the 500. You could have a residence there, it needs to be floodproofed to one foot above the base flood elevation. Whereas if you're a resident and you are in the special flood hazard area, the 100-year flood, throw out the floodway, if you're in that flood fringe area, you have to elevate it one foot above base flood elevation. So 500-year, you just need to floodproof it one foot above. If you're a resident, you have to elevate it.
For current stuff that's there, you have to make those changes?
No, if you're there, you're fine unless you become substantially damaged, then you need to come into compliance.
How about if you want to sell your property?
So that could mean you need to.
You can sell it. It's a question of whether you're either deemed substantially damaged or you substantially improve it. So 50% of the assessed value, so there's a trigger.
That same thing that got triggered in this fall?
Sure.
Okay.
So the question would be, I mean, I think if I understand Tim Lee's question correctly, it's the challenge that the whole state faces, which is the heart, literally, the, you know, the downtowns of most, of many communities are, you know, the oldest part of the community and they can still be vulnerable. But I think at this point, the proposal is that the more we can do to modify past land development practices further out so that there's more room for flood storage, more room for the stream to move around in its, in its banks across the valley floor and therefore alter its path that takes the pressure off the older, more heavily developed downtown neighborhoods, which is not, it's not a panacea, it doesn't avoid, first of all, that would take a very long time for those kinds of steps to really show any benefits. Second of all, given the very random nature of the events, and Irene is a perfect example of that, it may or may not work, just in terms of the path of the storm and the amount of rain and what time of year it is and a variety of other factors. But in general, I think the principle is trying to protect the historic downtowns as a traditional, long-term neighborhood. The other part about it is, of course, we saw substantial damage here, or I should say significant damage here. You know, there's a way in which the Connecticut River is now controlled in terms of its level. So the kinds of impacts that people have seen on TV watching footage of the 1937 floods, for instance, is a scenario that's not likely to repeat here because the Connecticut is controlled. So to some extent, it's that stretch of the wetstone from roughly the covered ridge to its confluence with the Connecticut River that's a real challenge. Does that help?
Yeah, kind of. I, I just, if, in thinking about development happening in a place like Flat Street, I'm just wondering how these standards that we'd like people to build to, how does that get enforced? I mean, what, where, is this where somebody says, I'm going to build a building on Flat Street, they take it to the DRB and the DRB says, great, looks good. And, you know, this is two years from now when maybe there's four people who've been on the DRB for how many years? And, you know, how, how, how does this stuff?
Well, if it was in the designated special flood hazard area or if the town chooses to adopt fluvial erosion hazard standards, then the zoning administrator would review it and that would be identified at the outset.
Just the site plan approval or the actual design of the building?
Well, to the extent that the building has to meet certain kinds of requirements, whether it be floodproofed or the first floor be one foot above base flood elevation or whatever the requirement is, that's what would be reviewed by the zoning administrator, which is the way it happens now.
I just want to point out that this is really a discussion about a discussion. This isn't even, we're a few steps removed from.
Yeah.
Right.
We're still talking about the management.
Detail, you know, so to say. So I think what, I mean, one of the things that probably we ought to note is what the land use chapter is going to say about this.
Right.
Which is what we have in front of us here. And I think the notable things are that the area, the history of it, the history of the effort to establish a fluvial erosion hazard area and ordinance, and then also the fact that a difference between the former effort and the future effort, should it come to pass, is that it will encompass the whole town rather than just that one area. And those are the major differences, and that's, I think those are the major things that are called out in the plan in addition to what Liz mentioned from the memo.
Yeah.
So I, you know, we decided we would talk about this for a half hour. We have a couple of minutes more, but I recognize that people are here to talk about this, so.
I have some comments, too, that I want to be able to put out.
Okay.
So it can happen after tomorrow before, it doesn't matter.
Not going to say no, so.
Yeah.
Would you stand up and introduce yourself, Tim?
You might have to kneel down, actually.
Or whatever, yeah, every way you want to do it.
Are we settling it?
Yeah, we're settling it. I have some thoughts about this in terms of big picture. And I would encourage the commission to look at this in a little bit broader fashion than our land use chapter than perhaps just fluvial erosion, to take more of a holistic approach. The problem, or problems that we've experienced over the last, let's say, decade or possibly four, are not just the peripheral of the brook, the flood channel or the floodplain, it's the entire watershed. I'd say the entire watershed, I think it's something like 18 square miles that runs up into Marlborough and Dummerston Hill, into the hills. And part of what has exacerbated the problem, in my opinion, is generally a big disaster development in the upper reaches and the higher areas have impacted the amount of water in the 97 and Sunset Falls down into the lower reaches. At this point in time, up on Sunset Lake Road, you can clear cut, and it has been clear cut substantially. If you want to build a house up there, you can go and clear cut two acres. And there is no effort within our zoning or our planning to restrict the, to restrict development in a much broader and larger sense. And I would encourage that, not to be just, you know, I mean, fluvial erosion is about an assessment of the topography of a body of water, it's about putting lines on match and putting restrictions within that. But if we really want to deal with this as a town, as a public town plan, then we have to look at the whole thing. You know, it may be that we reduce, we limit clear cuts, or we say, if you want a clear cut, then for every two trees you cut down, you've got to put one back. There's all sorts of approaches that could be taken. Certainly there's mention here about dry boys, culverts, and so on and so forth, but I think it's a much broader topic than that. And then the other part of it is, or another part of it is that we then have to look at the overall maintenance of our water systems and our brooks and streams. At this point in time, talking terms of purposes, we ignore it, you know, until we have a disaster and then everybody runs around with backhoes and starts putting in, you know, armoring or whatever it is dealing with it. I personally feel that there needs to be a concerted effort or a plan that deals with, where is this stormwater guy? You know, where is, you know, what the roads go? What is the stormwater systems that are in place? Where are the culverts? Where is, you know, are they the right size? It's a whole, it's a whole much broader picture than just going fluvial erosion. And the town goal in terms of how we're saying anything should be to consider all of those aspects, including, you know, perhaps at the outset, taking a look at the housing aspects of it, where we do have housing that is certainly placed at this point in time in areas that we consider critical, and what we do to remove that from its, well, not too much remove it, relocate it into areas that are safer. So I don't see this as just a FE hazard ordinance or an FE hazard piece of, you know, zoning legislation that comes, you know, two, three sections in the book that considered going to be developing. It's a, it's much more of a problem that the town needs to get into its vision and its plan for the future in terms of how we mitigate these floodwaters.
I just want to say that I know I only use the words fluvial erosion hazard, but in here is low-impact development, which includes some of the things you're talking about, as well as the consideration of a stormwater utility. Actually, that's in the municipal facilities section. And so, so we have tried to address some of those things, Tim? I don't think we've addressed necessarily development in the, in the upper reaches, you know, I don't think we've.
Well, that's this one, discussing the appropriateness of three-acre zoning in the rural district.
Yeah, we've talked about a steep slopes overlay, that we'd be looking at erosion plans and.
We've not, to Tim's point, we've not explicitly discussed restricting forestry practices or clearing land for residential use, and I think that's a useful addition.
Yeah.
So we could have percentage coverage requirements or something like that, but certainly, I think from where we were coming from, thinking about increasing the minimum parcel size substantially, like more than, you know, probably just over tripling it from three to 11 or 12 acres was what we'd been discussing.
Yeah.
And that, in and of itself, would significantly reduce any further, you know, this just reduces the density to a point where, unless you're really opposed to trees, which I guess you could be, but there's going to be a lot of trees left over.
There's something.
Could we just note that kind of concern in the narrative here?
Yep, I think, I think it's a point well made.
Yeah.
We don't talk about buffers either, and I went to the Dummerston Conservation Commission's presentation last week with Marie Caduto, and she talked a lot about buffers and how if there is development, if you do buffers along the river, how that can make a whole difference. And I don't know if we need to mention that.
I think we talk about buffers in natural resources.
Yes, but that's.
Right.
And I think that at least some of what you're talking about, Tim, will also come into play since we are considering the whole town now.
Yeah.
Rather than, you know, like for instance, before, we weren't considering Crosby Brook, and that was one of our worst situations, you know, most pressing situations, but our previous effort at this didn't have anything to do with that, so, you know. And that's where our discussion of stormwater utility came in, too, because that's something, you know, some towns have that. We really have never brought that to a discussion point, so.
We do have stormwater management ordinances in this town, generally it's restricted to developments of one acre.
Yeah.
And bringing the, you know, a consideration, and in fact, one of the conversations with the interim ordinances in West Brattleboro in 2006, '56, was to reduce the size of the impact that triggered stormwater.
Right, right. I remember that really well.
And that became part of the ordinance.
Right.
It was, it was one of the smart things that was suggested that got lost in the parade.
Yeah.
Huh.
Anybody else, any other members of the public would like to speak to this? Carolina, did you have more?
Just a little bit. I just want to say thank you to the planning office for relooking at this and being sure that it's a little more detailed in the land use plan, and I know we may talk about it in the subcommittee meeting. And I want to acknowledge that we are, what Gary just said, that we are going to be looking at all of the waterways, the Connecticut River, the west, the wetstone, the Crosby, and their various other tributaries like the Halliday Brook and Ames Hill Brook and all that. And when I think about all those, and actually in listening to Marie Caduto last week, different waterways have different kind of hydrologies, and some are sort of better than others. By better, I mean the way they handle flooding and whatnot. And so I want to propose that somewhere in there, we have a meeting with Marie and anybody else from the state, whether it be, this is in the future, whether it's a small committee meeting or she comes before the whole board, to talk about those kind of differences and what kind of recommendations. And maybe that's part of the whole plan when we really jump into it, but I want to be sure that we look at that and get some guidance as to.
Marie works for the state?
Yes, A and R. She's a water person. What, what the similarities are when we look at the whole area and what would there need to be differences on the different brooks and waterways? Because my guess is that there may be some differences there, or how do we write, write something up that's inclusive everywhere? I just think that it's, when you look at the Connecticut, it's very different than the Crosby or the wetstone.
Okay.
So I just want to be sure that that happens. And I'd like to ask that we have an open public education session. We've had one, the Conservation Commission sponsored one, and I think that was in December, where Marie and Chris Campney from Wyndham Regional and David Dean spoke. And that was pretty well attended, and there's been other meetings, but I would like us to have another public education meeting, just education, to look at the things from Irene, and to specifically have people put forward any concerns or questions they might have around river management. And I'd like that to happen sometime between now and June. It wouldn't be anything that really, where we're breaking down the zoning per se, but again, it would just be a public meeting, and maybe the Conservation Commission can be asked to sponsor that again. I'd be willing to work.
Let me just interrupt you for a second. Okay, go ahead.
And I would also, for that meeting, we'd like to be sure that land butters are specifically invited to come. Again, just for information, there's been some meetings already that have happened, but I think while this is still, before a year goes by, I would just like to see one more where it's specifically targeted to people. where it's specifically targeted to people, general information, and to people who have specific concerns or information about their property or land butters. And I know we're really working on a tight schedule with the town plan, but I think having a, an evening meeting somewhere isn't, isn't too much to ask between now and June. It's just, again, it's not to, to take apart. It's just, it's not to look at all the specifics of what we want, but it's just to gather information and to gather more from what people's concerns might be, especially people who had property affected. And I think it's better sooner rather than later. Longer goes, time goes by, more people forget.
Well, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I'm just, when, when we look at the schedule here for the town plan, we are, we are standing a really good chance of not being done before July 1st with the whole process. Even this tonight, which it's good that we're doing, but we have two more chapters to finish tonight. And I know it doesn't seem like a lot to call a meeting at night or whatever, but it, it, it's gonna be hard even to finish this by July 1st, which, you know, so.
Yeah, no, I understand all that.
Yeah, okay, so.
I just partially feel that we've had, again, like I mentioned at the last meeting, we've had members of the select board and other members of the community asking us to begin, they really want us to bring this back, and we will. But I think in response to that, to show that we're responding, we did talk about it tonight, and we've included more in the land use chapter, but I still, I would still like to see a public meeting happen that the Planning Commission per se sponsors, and I'd be willing to help make that happen.
Okay. Okay, anybody else have anything to say about fluvial erosion and flooding and so forth tonight?
Are you talking about all under this land use? Only one, one thing strikes me, and under Policies and Actions Number Two, where it says, "Provide public access to..." We've been asked to approve this in a general sense or in, in specific terms, this outline?
We're, we're not done with the land use chapter. We were just throwing in what we, I mean, you'll see that at the next meeting, like a fuller draft of it.
Gotcha. If I were writing that line too, for clarity, I would, I'd rather provide public access. I would provide, I'd put some sort of clarifier in there, provide greater public access, provide increased public access. We have some public access now. I think I would, to clarify that, seek to provide more. I'm not sure what you all think would be the best word, more, greater, increase, whatever, but I would clarify that as more than we have now.
Okay.
I would just like to make the comment that once we're happy with the land use section incorporating all of these comments, I think perhaps we'll be content to let the master plan and the land use section of it speak for our intentions in terms of flooding as we go forward. And it's just a thought.
Yeah, which is the purpose of it, yeah. Which is why I think it's really important to complete the town plan. Okay, well, let's end on that and move on to the next item. Thanks for coming, and please stay. I don't know if that's what everybody was here for, but. So the next item on the agenda is the town plan draft timeline. And that's what everybody has a copy of. Sue, do you want to make some comments on this?
Sure. So we had met with Gary earlier this week to kind of figure out where we're at, where we're moving, because we are nearing completion of draft chapters. And we were trying to look at, well, if we wanted to get it adopted before this Planning Commission has some changeover, what that would look like. And so I just kind of roughed out this, if you start on the January, February, March, April side, given the public warning timelines and written in statute, what that would look like. And so basically, in order for it to happen, there's a lot of assumptions in here. The first one is, we would have to kind of approve, the Planning Commission would have to approve a complete draft by April 9th.
Wow.
Because we have a 30-day warning period, and we've got to get it to the newspaper, we have some time for that. Distribute it to neighboring towns, write a report.
It's a 30-day warning period?
It's a 30-day.
That's for the town plan, different than zoning?
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yep.
So, so then at the next meeting from now?
Well, we have to talk about that.
Yeah, no, but I mean, before we do that on April 9th, then March 26th, what has to happen?
We need to have a finalized land use chapter, or, you know, enough to feel comfortable with, maybe a little direction for some changes. We would need to-
Economic development. And comments on the municipal services, facilities and services.
And then, I was just envisioning that once we were set with every chapter, that we'd have the opportunity to look over the whole thing. Because there were so many things that we said, we'll make sure that such and such references, such and such, particularly the land use, that that's an important step to make sure
Right.
we remembered everything that we wanted to remember.
For this to even happen on the 9th, would mean that we would have to have another meeting probably the week of the 2nd, I think is what we were talking about, right? Because there's no way we're going to go from the 26th of trying to finalize the land use chapter, finalize economic development.
And municipal-
And municipal facilities, we would be looking at finalizing tonight, right?
Tonight, I do.
Yeah, so even at that, we would need to probably-
Well, let's go through the whole thing and then, then go back.
See how we're doing?
So, so if we-
Well, that's the next day, so that's what we would have to do there.
In order to meet that time, we'd have to throw in an extra meeting.
Yeah, if we even, yeah, wanted to attempt.
Let's, let's, I think this is where, if we go all the way through, then you can come back and figure out what's needed to do then.
So then, so it's a 30-day warn, we have to write a report, get it to our neighboring town planning commissions, send it to the newspaper. Planning Commission is only required to have one public hearing. We thought we should have more than one. So we would look at the first meeting in May, May 14th, we could have a public hearing, and then I just threw one in another time that week.
So there's a meeting on the 9th, then another one on the 23rd?
No.
Of April, or not?
No, not-
Still me?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, we'd have our regular meeting on the 23rd, sorry. I was thinking that was the week after.
And would the 23rd, you've already, it's already deemed complete?
Yes.
Yes, because we'd have to warn it, and it would have to be available to the public.
So once it's warned, it's frozen?
I think we could do some editing.
I think you can do some really minor editing, but it, the text is-
Nothing substantial.
Yeah, it is, it pivots on the definition of substantial, a substantial change, which is not, okay.
It's really kind of typos, right?
Uh, well, a bit more than typos, but not-
A few little extra words like what?
Points of clarification, taking out redundancies, removing things that have been stated twice. If you identified a contradiction, you know, you could eliminate that.
So minor cleaning up.
But new policy direction, you know? The inclusion of a new zoning district that no one's heard of before? No, you know, so just, yeah, within reason.
So is it likely, though, that, that we would, we would spend our meeting on the 23rd doing stuff like that?
Yeah.
I think we, well, I would think on the 23rd, we'd be talking about how the public hearing is going to go as well.
Right.
You know, getting prepared, being comfortable, what it's going to do what.
And this proposed schedule is so that it not only goes through our public hearing, but through the select board public hearing while we still have this commission, is that?
Yes.
That's right.
But, but, yeah, yeah.
That's the goal.
The goal.
We need to get down there.
Right, so, so far, where we are.
Let's look at the week of May 13th.
Yep.
That means that we'd have two public hearings, and the staff would have a day to forward it to the select board. Is that realistic? Would we be-
It assumes, it assumes that the draft that goes to public hearing is-
Untouched by the public hearing process.
Untouched by, yeah, is, is that a realistic assumption?
Well, if it's lots touched, we can't do that. We have to have another, we have to warn it again.
Right.
Right?
Right.
30 days, so all bets are off.
There's kind of a feedback loop in there right away, where if it, if it's deemed a substantial change on the basis of the public hearings that the Planning Commission holds, then you go back, it's sort of like a Monopoly game, or is it, you go back to square one, which would be the first public hearing process. I mean, you wouldn't have to have two necessarily again, but you would have to have another public hearing.
To clarify that.
To vet, to vet the changes that were made.
The major changes, yeah.
Do not pass go, do not collect.
That's right.
Something like that. I was thinking more of the one with ladders and the snakes.
Shits and ladders.
Just slide back.
I can bring it in.
Yeah, I think it's very much at this point like shoots and ladders.
Candyland, maybe, more.
Yeah, really, yeah.
More fun anyways.
Yeah. Snakes and ladders. That, isn't it?
So that's, so that is that, you know, that is in this world of fantasy-
Yeah, and there's no guarantees.
There could be two hearings, skip a day, forward it to the select board to start the clock for a 30-day.
Yeah, there's a lot of smoothness assumed there that is not likely.
Well, it also assumes that the select board is willing to have-
Off-schedule.
Is willing to take it and have their, have their public hearing scheduled immediately. They have to have two, so it also assumes that they're willing to meet and hold another select board on a non-regular scheduled meeting, so.
They have to have two.
They have to have two.
But we only have to have one, but we could have two.
Right. I would say, just as a guidance for the commissioners, if, if we were making minor revisions to an existing town plan that we're overall pretty happy with, you might think that you could float by with one. But this is, there's, this is in English, but that's about the only parallel between this and the plan that it replaces. So it's so, it's such a different approach and structure that we think that it's going to take two public hearings.
And we, and we haven't had one public hearing about anything in the time that I can remember, except for some really minor things, but.
We had some public outreach stuff early on in 2010 and early parts of 2011, where we've not presented parts of the plan or the plan as a document to the public. So even just explaining it-
Well, actually, what I'm saying is that in any ordinance or any, like the Putney Road Plan or the West Brattonborough Plan, we had more than one public hearing on those, and those were much less comprehensive than this is, so.
Yeah.
Right.
So there, there's no way.
Right.
How long has the board been working on this, for two years?
Two and a half.
1974.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would suggest that, you know, with all the work that's been put forward, I would think it would be a disservice to it to rush at the end. But at the same time, I wouldn't want Gary to think this accomplishment has been diminished if it doesn't get done in time, because, I mean, it's still a tremendous achievement that-
We need to be forced to make decisions.
And I was pretty, you know, kind of, you know, nonplussed about it, thinking that it was going to go past July 1st. But, you know, whatever, I'm, I'm fine with that. I mean, it'll be, it'll be fine. No sweat, you know, so I, you know, this really, especially when you see how this lays out, the chance of this happening before July 1st is, is pretty slim, you know? And it, and it doesn't make any sense just from even crazy, you know, late nights or whatever, those kinds of things to, to try to make it happen like this. I mean, for instance, to have the two public hearings and then have to, have to forward it to the select board so fast. I mean, there's a decent chance that there'll be a couple of substantial changes that have to be made, and then it'll have to get warned again, and then all bets are off. So I don't know that it makes a lot of sense to set it up for something that we don't think is going to happen, but that's my opinion.
Right, I mean, the other aspect to this is giving the select board enough time to, to read the document individually and to ask questions, either of staff or you, or discuss it informally, so that they're comfortable with it as a document prior to their public hearings. Because there's, there's a couple of different steps in this dance. One is, you know, our audience is the public, but our audience is also the select board, because they're the body that has to adopt it. So even if we didn't necessarily attract too much criticism from the public, it's still an audience, the select board themselves is still an audience. It's important, we've not, you know, we, we reported out to them not too long ago, and we've given them a set of chapter drafts, excluding economic development.
Some of the recent ones, they-
Right, some of the more recent chapters they've not seen, but they've seen-
They saw a bunch in the following.
So I, I think, including natural resources, which was an important chapter. I think, so I think, for instance, the land use chapter alone, because of the scope and the depth of the changes that are being proposed here, it would be understandable if there were questions about what, what that meant, and that we should give them time to, to process it as a document before we're then asking them to, you know, to speak to it, which is an aspect of the public hearing that they're going to hold.
I mean, this also does not include a meeting with the town plan advisory group, which I actually would like to get back together and, you know, have them a chance to respond. I mean, one member, Maggie, has been pretty active in reviewing drafts. You know, the others receive it, don't know what their engagement has been with it, but we'd identified them as-
We thought it was important to bring them back together again. That was always part of the plan, it's not on the calendar, but.
So, so I would propose that the calendar be redrawn a little bit, and taken things like that into consideration. But I, I would also not want it to leak into the summer too far.
Right.
Because, because the benefit of giving people time to look things over and whatnot is going to be lost with people going on vacation and being out of town and stuff.
We could pop you on waxy paper so that it was waterproof.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, it, it, it's, still should be with some deliberate speed, but, you know, not crazy speed, you know?
Right.
So.
I mean, I envision that we could have Planning Commission public hearings in July.
Yeah.
I mean, in June, I'm sorry.
June, June, yeah, that would be good.
Right.
I mean, I, I feel like if there's anything that I should be here for, it should be that, just because it, it would be funny not to be like that, you know?
So instead of the May dates, the June.
For Planning Commission.
And then let somebody else talk to the select board, you know?
Well, we also have the same, just by happenstance, the same select board that we already presented to, which is just a good thing, actually, you know, just works in their favor and our favor, because we've presented to them already, and you've handed them drafts already, so.
I think we're pretty eager for a whole lot of reasons. It's, it's kind of grant construction season and they're offered them. There's a whole lot of other stuff that we can't stop coming on now as well. So for our purposes, we'd really like to see this move forward. At least if the select board schedules their public hearings in the early part of July, I think that would be an outcome that we would be, in other words, what I'm saying there is not that they-
To hold them in August.
If they, yeah, if they schedule it, if they warn them in July, and they're held in, you know, late July, early August, then that would be, that would be great.
And then we'd have a draft that we were set on by that time, so that could be our goal.
Right.
Right, it wouldn't stop the work of the Planning Commission.
Right.
Because most likely, it'll be close to that version, yeah.
Right, and I think going back to- And I think, going back to, to Carol's point, I, to be, to be honest, I don't see staff, even with lots of volunteer effort, being able to schedule something between now and June, particularly taking in, um, or distributing invitations to our butters. There's another important aspect here, too, going back to the question of fluvial erosion and when to schedule it. I think my preference is to make a clear commitment to do it again in the, in the town plan, particularly in the land use chapter. I think that we need to go back and reread the natural resources chapter and so forth to make sure that there's some matching language in there now, um, and pay some attention to those kinds of details. I think for us to be successful the next time around, we need to spend much more time contemplating how we're going to do it before we start doing it. And so I would, partly it's the pressure of trying to get the plan out, part of it, partly it's, um, needing some time to collect our thoughts and think about what is the best approach, partly it's to have informal discussions with representatives from the state concerning literally how the streams have changed and how tho, those changes and their experience of Irene has influenced their work, and if they were going to do it over again, how would they do it?
Yeah.
And they're not in a situation to talk about that right now yet either. So I really feel for us to do a good job on fluvial erosion has, it needs time and it needs, uh, real focus and concentration, and we can't give it that, um, at least until a draft of the plan goes off to the Select Board for their review. That's when I expect we could shift gears across and do it. You know, and for better or for worse, that coincides with hurricane season, so maybe it'll be timely. But I think that's really, uh, more realistic. I, I understand the impetus, wanting to not let the ball just kind of roll away, um, you know, to keep it in play. I get all that, but I think at this point it would be some serious reflection on how it worked, worked out last time and what we really intend this time. And we are thinking, we are already talking about a much, much, much bigger impact in terms of the number of...
Oh, yeah.
Landowners affected, for instance. All right, so, so anything like planning or organizing an event takes on a completely different scale compared to our earlier efforts.
And as we've talked, you know, we've talked about this in the land use portion of this and the, um, uh, natural resources, um, you know, we need to put this in the context of the rewrite of the zoning order.
Right, exactly, which is hopefully...
You can't do one without the other, really, and, you know? So it's, it's a, it's a huge project, you know? It's not a little thing. But I think this language makes very clear that, uh, the Planning Commission is making a commitment to go on through this process, you know? And it's going to be a big one, so.
Yeah. No, I do realize that the conversation with the state people is going to be huge, just on our part with them, I mean, all these, not just that there's more than one river, but all of those things.
We're talking about the possibility that they're going to have to run new LiDAR and redo maps. I mean, you know, it may not affect Brattleboro, but certainly across the region, there's enough observed difference in stream bed...
Yeah.
...position that, and, and that, you know, that doesn't preclude us from discussing fluvial erosion, um, per se, but at some point, if you don't have a map that the state's going to count on, um, you've got to, you know, I mean, you at least have to wait for that. So, and I don't know if they're planning to do that or not, I mean, there's, there's a lot of questions that are still in the air.
Well, some of the places they were standing before aren't there anymore.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, they walk, they're, they're...
Yeah, there's literally where we walked when we did the fluvial erosion workshop, when we walked on the wetstone, like, you can't walk there anymore because it's not there.
Right.
Okay. You invited us to, I'm sorry, you invited the DRB to attend the next Planning Commission meeting on the twenty-sixth to, uh, make comments against the practice of the last company on the land use section. What, um, I just have some guidance here for the DRB. What are your expectations? Is there something specific that you would like the DRB to break, the breadth of it, or?
Well, I, you know, I don't know if that still makes sense as that being the date. I don't know. Do you think it is? I mean, that's...
Sure.
The DRB as a board has been advised, that's the name.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fine. They'll be commenting on the draft, just like the Planning Commission will.
I don't...
Any direction that you could give the board in terms of, or is it just broad?
I think it's broad, you know?
I have some expectations.
Go ahead.
Go, go.
Well, typically, you know, if the, if the Development Review Board keeps seeing the same types of issues come along time after time, that would be a signal that there's a zoning, underlying zoning issue that would need to be changed, and you guys have that expertise, and we could benefit from hearing what those items are.
Yeah. And then just, um, you're familiar with the map, you know, with the zoning district map, and so we're proposing, I, you know, insofar as we're proposing changes in the land use chapter, they're the most significant changes, I guess. So, um, you know, I'm sensitive to the idea that you're, the board, the DRB understands its role as one of implementation, but you have enough experience.
Does the DRB have a copy of the latest, I mean, do the members of the DRB?
No, not yet. I wanted to get it further along. Tim has seen it, and he asked me to send it to the rest of the DRB members.
I have a question that I got out after this meeting today.
Yeah.
So, so the, so, so the DRB has ten days to review it?
Yeah.
And ten days to think about it, and then ten days to come in, hopefully with some...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good comment.
Right.
And, and it really can be in this draft more or as far as it's gone.
Yeah.
It needs to go out.
Within enough time.
With time, enough time for people to...
Get back.
Yeah, yeah, you know, think about it.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to, the subcommittee's going to meet tomorrow, so we'll have a, a new...
Yeah, I'll have some new input there, so that could, that could potentially then go to the DRB, if you wanted to still keep the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I would like to keep the twenty-sixth, I think. Keep moving, so.
All right, okay.
It's two weeks from today, right? March twenty-sixth, right?
Yeah. Sure.
So that'll be the joint meeting to talk about land use?
Yes.
Sort of different from the kind of jointness that we were thinking before, though, because it'll be worn, uh, because people, there may be three members of the, maybe a forum of, of DRB meeting, or members here, but it won't be, we'll all be sitting in a big circle talking about, or will we? I mean, it's not, it's not a joint meeting as such, but...
Yeah, we, we hadn't...
I think a big circle's a good idea.
I, I don't think it's the jointness we were talking about.
No.
It's a separate topic completely, and, um, you, you may find it's a perfect chapter that nobody will attend on the DRB. I, I personally can't come, I'll give you written comments, so, but, um...
I'll be there.
And Catherine, you'll be there. Catherine is working up there, so she can't really come in.
James, James is going to have that really uncomfortable, on the split personality.
I'm in everybody's team, I'll be great.
I don't even know how we're going to count for his presence.
I hope, I hope that...
It might be a quorum, it might be the quorum decider.
Double counting.
Yeah. Vote often and vote twice, James.
Okay. Well, yeah, so I, I, I hope that everybody on the DRB knows that if they can't attend, that they should submit comments and questions.
We can encourage, we'll say, you know, when we send an email out, we'll encourage them to do that. I expect we'll get comments, which would be great. Much appreciated.
Okay. Okay, um, so why don't we move on to our next topic?
Economic.
Which is the economic development chapter.
All right, so, um, first of all, let me say how sorry I am that, um, you got it like at the beginning of the meeting, um...
Other than the end, Rod. Right?
Maybe not, I don't know.
Thanks, Tim.
Bye, thank you.
So, um, it's a little bit different from the last time you saw it. It's substantially longer, there's some, some technical things in here that contributed to my fatigue, um, which are not a big deal, um, but let me just, um, go through what I've got. So it's still a working draft, as you can see. The first thing I'd like to draw your attention to is that I think the principle is, um, needs work. It doesn't now speak very much to, um, what we're attempting to achieve in the chapter or the scope of what I think economic development should be about. You'll notice that these are, the, the formatting is different, it's now consistent with the format that we settled on some time ago. There are three goals, um, five policies, and some of the policies have substantial action steps, um, or a substantial list of action steps. Thematically, what I'm trying to do in the goals is, without actually spelling it out, speak to the idea of what some people call the triple bottom line. So paying attention to, um, strategies that make for prosperous and successful businesses, um, and that that wealth that the community generates in that way is, um, is distributed and used in a way that promotes social cohesion, because it expands economic opportunity, therefore access to that wealth. And that, um, in so doing, it would become a healthier community, and that, um, one that respects the physical environment. So typically, to summarize, when people summarize the triple bottom line, it's the economy, people, environment is the three things of the triple bottom line, and you'll see this discussed in places such as the Social Responsible, Responsible Business Network and similar kinds of organizations.
Isn't the state legislature pursuing that, looking at that also? Instead, as an alternative to the GDP?
This wouldn't, this doesn't, this doesn't stand as an alternative to the GDP, it just, I think...
But it's the same philosophy, I think, the triple bottom line.
Right. So then, um, the next goal speaks to the, um, existence of what are referred to as industry clusters, and there's an explanation in the chapter about what an industry cluster is. We identified some in an earlier meeting, and I have some concerns here, or just some questions, that I've done some very preliminary analysis, which I think is adequate for the town plan in many ways. We have, um, enough of a presence in the creative sectors, in the creative industries, sustainable food processing, forestry, transportation and logistics, precision manufacturing, and heritage and cultural tourism as part of the creative industries, to call those clusters. It's a little bit difficult to identify an existing cluster around green energy, but I think it's a worthwhile goal and appropriate thing to identify, because it actually backs into some of the existing, um, concentrations of worker skills and businesses that we have. In other words, we know we've got a lot of trees, and we have some sunshine, we have a lot of local expertise about, um, implementing alternative or renewable energy, um, programs and projects, and we have enough interest locally to make that viable in the state, in particular through efficiency Vermont, and, uh, the regulation of utilities is now extremely, um, encouraging of the green energy sector. So that's the second goal. Then the last one, so my question there for you to contemplate is, I think actually heritage and cultural tourism really should be folded in, should be thought of as part of the creative industries. So that could just get folded in there. Then the third one, again, remembering that the town doesn't have a direct role in, um, delivering infrastructure apart from water, sewer, um, roads and sidewalks, maybe the bus system. In other words, power, uh, and other, and, and road networks are, and the rail network are either private or, or provided through the state. The one that's there that I call out is broadband internet access is a key infrastructure issue that has been going on here for a long time.
How about childcare? Because we need to address it in the chapter.
We, we do need to address childcare in this chapter, and so far it's an absence, I'm glad you...
It might fit there, because it's part, you can view it as part of the infrastructure.
Yeah, okay.
I know, it's different.
That's good.
So when you say obtain there, Rod, um, would you, could you also say obtain and bolster, or, um, I mean...
Yeah.
Because part of, part of the land use chapter, um, in talking about, you know, I mean, basically, in the land use chapter, one of the things is to use the infrastructure that's there.
More intensive.
It is town infrastructure, some of it, water and sewer and road, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not...
I don't know if bolster's the right word, but I mean...
Yeah. I'm not that, I'm not that into obtain either, I just didn't want to use whatever I was using before.
Yeah.
It was probably foster again or something, I don't know. I mean, there's all these kinds of euphemisms for trying to coax other people into doing it and remembering that you need to do it yourself, but you can't actually, I mean, that, a lot of it is lobbying for or reminding state and federal, you know, entities that, that these are still needs that need to be satisfied, and working with whatever the program is from the Vermont Telecom Authority or whoever it is, to make sure that, you know, Wyndham County and Brattleboro doesn't get forgotten and those kinds of things, so is often not a very correct role.
I mean, maybe it's maintain, you know? Just because, um, I know it's important, you know, the electronic and, you know, technological infrastructure, but, um, you know, sort of the nuts and bolts of what we have now...
Right.
Is water and sewer, a lot, and the road network, and so I, I think it would be bad to leave, to leave that out of this.
That out, okay, cool. All right. So the first policy addresses, um, what was the plan's major focus for economic development, which was the revitalization of the, um, commercial districts. So that's there. The last point there, um, has come out of the land use research that we've been doing, which is, we've established that the median parcel size in the industrial districts is just over one acre. It's actually under an acre. So we are now dealing with an inquiry where somebody would like to have a building that is three acres, so you can't put a three acre building on a parcel that's less than an acre, um, and then have parking and stuff going around it. So we've, we've kind of inadvertently identified an odd anomaly in, uh, in our zoning, and so that's there to actually address or, or really kind of confront that problem. So, um, the second policy actually addresses, um, access to economic opportunity more than anything else. That's really the intention. So the first part of it is intended to address, um, improving access to, um, vocational, vocational training and job, job readiness training. Then it goes on to recognize that, two point three, what I'm trying to do with that one is acknowledge that in some regards, we're well-serviced with, uh, higher education facilities and, um, community colleges in particular. So the, the, the one thing that happens is that they just don't happen to be in Vermont. So what I'm trying to get at there is those regional providers, including Keene State and, and so forth, are vital resources for people in this community, and if there's ways we can enhance our relationship with those institutions, we should do that, um, and not be ignoring them just because they're either in New Hampshire or Massachusetts. Then the last one is, um, taking seriously the idea of... Then the last one is taking seriously the idea of neighborhood-level asset-based community development that looks at the individual capacities of households and community members, and addresses some of their issues from that standpoint. And I feel like there are both regional level and neighborhood level programs that could be mounted there that would be effective. And so the intention there is to ensure that those people who, for whatever reason, through physical disability or some other barrier to the participation in the workforce or something, are encouraged to, to overcome that, and that their contribution to the community as a volunteer or whatever it is, is valued as well. Policy three is develop a comprehensive neighborhood plan for the new market tax credit-eligible census tract. Policy four is intended to make it a little more focused around supporting the existing and emerging industry clusters. And five is...
Was that SBAP, is that, is that a federal program?
No, it's town of Brattleboro.
Oh, the black grant.
Yeah, it's second-generation VCDP funds, so the town has about $300,000 in that fund, and there's many things that call on those funds, but the Small Business Assistance Program usually waits for an applicant. When they come forward, they can ask for up to $40,000.
As a loan or as a grant?
As a loan interest loan.
Oh, okay.
And that's, when people pay that back, part of it goes back into the revolving fund? Or is all of it?
Almost all of it.
Almost all of it?
Yeah.
How's that promoted?
Never heard of it.
Yeah, I haven't read it either.
It's a highly-publicized, very well-known program. Don't, don't understand what language is, I don't know, we'll have to do better if you didn't know about it.
If there's a demand for this, let's say in the next couple of years, more people find out about it, how, is there a selection process? Is it, is it job creation? Is it, it's the economic, social benefit that these businesses may have on the town?
There's criteria that the applicant has to respond to, and part of it is job creation in it, but it also can be, you know, an investment in a neighborhood or a building, or, you know, the social, the social measure is important, but it's not, it's not pivotal. Generally, what the town is doing is acting as a lender of last resort, and the one constraint about it is, is that they take a position against equipment, they won't take a position against real estate. So there is an effort, if it doesn't work out, that the town can at least be reimbursed for some of its funds, but...
This comes before the select board, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
So, yeah, all right, I do remember, I think, certain groups like...
Cub and Harvest?
Yeah, but also fireworks has come before them, and both when he was the wine bar and now here.
Yeah, he's a, he's one of our big alum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
But it isn't...
Yeah, Matt is a serial SBAP applicant.
Yes, yes, really. But I guess I could say I only know about it from having watched some select board meetings and knowing that, and still wondering, well, what is this, and where does this money come from, and how does this happen? So again, I don't think it's...
If you could explain, if you could explain to Liz, that would be great.
So I think it does need more visualness out there.
Okay, visualness, all right.
Visibility.
Just because I don't want to go back and watch old select board meetings.
Come on. We're gonna put out a best of DVD, all right?
Best of, yeah.
Okay, so, that's a fundraising effort. So, and then actions under, policy five, I'm not sure if it's well enough, sort of separated from, well, it speaks to goal number three, I guess is what I'm really trying to say, but it may be a little bit too narrow in its construction. I think the news about the Fiber Connect project is pretty big news, and what we have not gotten clear about yet, because it's still a little early, is how people are going to hook up to that. Okay. So, so the introduction spells out why we're required to address economic development, because it's now an element in 24VSA, which is the governing statute for our work. It explains that Brattleboro has a lot of assets, before I go on to that, it remakes that point that the real reason that we engage in economic development is to ensure that we can support a range of high-quality public services, community development programs, social services, and municipal infrastructure.
Where are you, I'm lost here.
At the top of, just under, the first paragraph, under the introduction.
The last sentence.
The last sentence.
I was still looking at policy five.
Yeah, me too, I was.
Okay.
Hadn't caught up to you yet.
Heck of a segue, Rod.
Sorry.
Didn't even follow it.
Okay.
Me neither, thank you.
Must have been really smooth.
Your introduction needed an introduction.
Before we get into the text, can we, can we talk about the goals and policies real quick?
Oh, do you want, yeah, sure, so why don't we, why don't we just, that's a good point, why don't we, why don't we back up a little bit and talk about whether, first of all, I'd love it if you rewrote the principle. There's, because it's in a box, that means it's sort of like locked, locked text, because we went through a very elaborate process for adopting these principles.
Yes, we did.
So I'm not, I don't feel comfortable rewording it.
I think it's one of those things that, at the end of the chapter, then you go back and...
Back and fix it, yeah.
What's in the box.
Yeah, what's in the box is a little bit weak, I think.
I think goal number one is, it's lengthy, and it, when you first started talking about goal number one, those, that first sentence kind of summed all of that up, the promote social cohesion through the expansion of economic opportunity and access to wealth. And I mean, I understand what you're trying to say here, it's just, is there, is there a...
It runs on.
Well, if you took out the first wealth...
Right.
Then you'd still have the second one.
Well, I mean, is there a way that...
Increase our aggregate?
Yeah.
I get the triple bottom line thing, but there, can you just say triple bottom line?
No.
Or communitys and...
I'm reluctant to use something like triple bottom line, because it's just so, heck, you know, it's just...
Cliche.
It's a little bit like why we don't use the term sustainable or resilient, it's just, it means too many different things to too many people.
If you took out increase our aggregate wealth...
Yeah.
You'd have a nice little sentence there.
Yeah, I mean...
I think so, too.
You would, you would end up increasing aggregate wealth if you did everything that comes after it anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's almost like increase quality of life and value of buildings, or something along the value of the...
Yeah, I don't know if I want to be that, I mean, I don't want to be that explicit or that limiting, in a way. Yeah, I'm fine with taking that increase in aggregate wealth out, that works. In general, the, what I want to leave here is the sense that, I mean, this is in response, we held, we held a forum on sustainability, we've, you know, participated in a wide range of events that have come to Brattleboro over the time we've been doing the plan. Brattleboro hosted the Slow Economy Conference, that is now receiving substantial support from strolling of the heifers. There's a, there's a sort of a whole movement that's fairly popular here that, that addresses these kinds of things. I don't, you know, it's sort of a balancing act of recognizing the significance of that, of that perspective, but without sort of just, you know, assuming that that's what we're gonna do.
Let me just recognize that we're at, who took the clock down anyway?
Yeah, really.
Very...
It is...
It's 10 of eight.
Yeah.
If we're gonna make it through, our intention tonight was to make it through the economic development chapter and the municipal facilities and services chapter.
Yeah.
And I would say that we'll definitely want to be done by 8:30.
Yep.
So can we think about the wording for goal one? Maybe talk about it, talk via email or come up with something at the next meeting?
Sure, it's not locked in, I mean, that's the, what I'm trying to get at is the purpose of the goal. So in terms of the way that, so do you want us to just stick with the goals and policies right now, or do you want to go deeper, or what do you want to do?
Yes, goals and policies.
Why don't we stick with the goals and policies, because if we don't do that, we won't have done it.
All right.
So with the goals, if I can keep talking here, I think, we're sort of beating on the bush here as far as, can we just say job creation?
No.
Create jobs?
Well...
I mean, are you running for president?
Yeah. Do you want, how do you feel about the Federal Reserve Bank?
What?
No, she's still back at the Emmys and the Oscars. But she missed that meeting.
I mean, part of the challenge is, it's not, it's not, I think it's important not to just cast it so narrowly that it's about job creation, and to be really blunt about it, from a kind of an economic standpoint, even if we created the jobs, we don't necessarily have the people to put in them. So, I mean, we don't have very high unemployment. The more complicated explanation here is, why don't we have very high unemployment? Because we already don't have very much opportunity, so people who want to be in the paid economy are already not here in large numbers. If you want to see high unemployment, you go to Arizona or California, where there's, there has been up until recently, a lot of opportunity, and now it just stopped. That's 10% unemployment. Or go to, you know, urban Atlanta or something, and it's chronic, long-term, into generational, and it's, depending on the neighborhood, it's over 25%, and it's been like that for 30 years.
Yeah.
So we don't have that stuff. What we have is 4.7, and then we have it because people take a job out of town and then leave.
There's a whole different dynamic going on, though, as far as jobs in this town, though.
Right.
I mean, I've never seen it before, it's bizarre, and it's not a bad thing, it's just different. And it's, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, I'm not gonna start, I don't want to get into the subject of a living wage and all of that, but there are lots of people working for not a lot of money here, or working off the books, or working just three different jobs...
Yep.
Because there isn't, there aren't the jobs. And I realize the chicken and the egg thing going on here, too, but, I mean, you know, the, I don't know, there's, there's some, something that in this chapter, we're not touching on here. I mean, the, you see it everywhere, it's, there's...
Well, I'm not clear as to what Rob was describing earlier, was it, was it detriment or an asset?
Yeah.
As far as Brattleboro is concerned, you know, it has low unemployment, but there's not a large labor pool, so is that, maybe it's neither here nor there, it just needs to be addressed.
But it's rural USA, and more to the point, it's rural northern New England, and it's historically the case that many people in the lower segments of the income profile have multiple jobs. And part of it is seasonal nature, and part of it is to do with, you know, a whole bunch of traditions, it's somewhat different from other parts of the country. Lots of people born and raised here are more accepting of it than people who come from further away, because it's at such odds with their experience. It's, there's a lot of really complicated explanations for it. The point that I'm trying to make here in the goals is that it's not like, it's not like making jobs is unimportant, but what I, what I'm getting at is, if you're gonna make jobs, then they have, you know, we want them to be of a certain quality, we want them to be good jobs, and we want them to be in industries or in businesses that we think have got a chance at growing, which is what the second goal is about. So if we foster things that we're, you know, so for the most part, we're either already quite good at it, or we're showing positive growth in that segment.
So what you just said, that, that makes more sense for goal number two, instead of foster the development of industry clusters. And, I mean, I get what you're saying by that, but it seems like, you know, with this tech industry thing that is, that we've been talking about in this, whatever, that, that's a transportation and logistics, I get that part, but isn't that sort of a, that's more market-dependent than it is attractiveness of the area for people to have businesses here, does that make sense?
No, it's a really attractive, it's a really attractive location.
You know, and at one time, when CNS was trying to expand in one part of town, there was a lot of resistance to that, you know, and it's that, that's, I'm not saying that was right or wrong, but I'm just saying, that was a factor, a big factor, really.
A big part of it was the resistance to Exit 3A.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's the transportation and logistics, and that is one of the biggest industry sectors, clusters here, here in town.
And they're probably some of the best-paying jobs for unskilled workers, and they're very good-paying jobs for unskilled workers. So if you have a high school education, or not even, then CNS and other transportation and warehousing...
New Chapter.
New Chapter, any of the oil, any of the fuel distributors, you know, UPS, FedEx, you know, there's a bunch of stuff here, and it's between, it's to do with being on 91, it's to do with being ultimately on, hopefully on the railroad tracks, it's to do with being equidistant between, you know, upstate New York and, you know, being the bottom, you know, we're on an east-west route. I mean, there's just a whole lot of real, natural, and historical features that explain why transportation and logistics is a big deal for Brattleboro.
Okay, so...
So it becomes an important locational factor. So if you're gonna make food, like the yogurt plant...
Yeah.
You're gonna want to put it somewhere where you can access the distribution network to the second-biggest market in the country.
Okay.
So that's why they're here.
So can we say foster the development of high-quality jobs? It just, I, we can, we can foster the development of industry clusters, but robots could be doing that, and then...
That would be okay, too?
I'm okay with that, too, but I think in addition...
Right, so, I mean, that's why I'm saying I don't want it to be narrowly defined or described as jobs. So further in in the chapter, there's a discussion about what's happened in manufacturing. We've lost a lot of manufacturing employers in the last 10 years, and we've lost a lot of manufacturing jobs, about 30% of them. But the output from manufacturing hasn't actually shrunk in at all. So the people that remain behind doing the manufacturing and owning the manufacturing businesses are doing really well, there's just not as many of them as there were before. So that wealth is still really important for the community, they're still paying property taxes, they're still buying sandwiches and beer, that stuff is really important.
Yeah.
So we don't, and, you know, while we miss the jobs and we feel bad for the people who've lost those jobs, the important part is, is if they're successful businesses, and they're headquartered, and particularly if they're headquartered here, and many of them are, then they're really important to keep, even though they might be employing a third the number of workers that they were 10 years ago.
But I still think it needs to say something about high-quality jobs.
We do, it's...
I mean, that's around the country, not just Brattleboro, but businesses that have new businesses, growing businesses, whatever.
I think, in my mind, two is an inclusive enough statement to refer to jobs as well.
Employment is in the box.
What's that?
Employment is in the box.
Yep.
Not necessarily, because people could be making a lot of money for tech companies, which I do think should be in here, too.
Yeah.
They could be subbing out their work to India, and they're making a lot of money, not that, you know, do, there's something to be said for people in business who are creating jobs that have...
What about if it's down in policy two? Where it's more specific about the link between training and job creation?
I'll have to think about that, Rod.
All right.
You know, I like this cluster thing, but I think we kind of jump into it, and a more basic goal about all the various industries and sectors, you know, like education and agriculture...
Right.
And hospitals, all that stuff should be included in...
Oh, okay.
In the segments. And then, maybe in the box, you'd like to say something more about, you know, matching the assets of the town.
Okay.
Because, as we just discussed, there are many, not only, you know, it's scenic beauty, but it's, it's, it's location...
Right.
Transportation, all that stuff, I think.
So Liz, are you saying that under goal two...
So, Liz, are you saying that under goal two, rather than focus it on certain industry clusters, that we kind of keep it broad as to all the industries that are in Brattleboro?
Yeah, the basic industries, and then the clusters could be an action or a policy.
A policy, okay.
If it were a policy, then there might be actions that come...
Right, okay.
From it.
Right, that's okay. I guess, in my, I don't want to drag it out, I guess what I was getting at is that I don't think our economic development levers are very, I don't think we have very many, and I don't think they're very big levers. So, in other words, we don't get much control really over what happens. And, we need to be a much bigger place to have those levers.
Can, can we have an, an example of a lever? Or a lever?
Whatever is your pleasure, or pleasure.
The bean rooms or the bedrooms.
How about a business estate someplace?
Okay. If we were Ohio, we will be taking an extremely dramatic step of basically going around the country and finding viable businesses and making them package deals that would be very hard to refuse. So, giving them free land, free buildings, and free power, and free job training for up to 10 years, in an effort to induce them to open a business in Ohio.
That still happen?
Yes.
I thought that's the old way of doing business.
It is the old way of doing, and they're really into it in a big way. So, there are some big levers.
And we don't, so you're talking about incentives?
Yes.
And recruitment goals.
And, and control, and other, it would be a range of incentives and also some regulatory control. So, we don't set wages, we don't set job, work conditions, we don't, we don't inspect, you know, we don't have any of those things. We can't walk into somebody's business and, and regulate what they do around labor, or, or safety things, or a bunch of other things. It's either the state or the federal government, and they're not heavily present. And so, we also don't have large reserves of funds to coax or encourage or induce people to do things. And we, we miss out already in competitions for, for businesses locating here, because somebody else can make a bigger, a bigger offer. And, it's highly competitive, and it's very difficult, and we need to acknowledge that we don't have, we can't play that game.
Do we play that game at all? Do we give tax incentives?
We give, we abate taxes on property, real estate property and equipment. And it usually runs between five and 10 years, and it's basically a model of the state program. We work very hard to facilitate connections with the state. There's a range of state programs, and we have local knowledge and skills when it comes to operating the new market tax credit program. So, in other words, we have good local lawyers who get it.
So, those are kind of the actions, like this one about the colleges, and, you know, that a goal would be to coalesce all the educational facilities to show a potential developer that we have a trained workforce?
Well, I'll back it up a little, none of our, CCV would be involved in training workers that were, you know, suitable for some form of, you know, local employment. I think that World Learning and Marlborough College don't, they're traditional four-year college programs, in the instance of Marlborough, their master's programs are not necessarily focused on a local labor market, and World Learning is not.
So, then you're talking about Keene and...
Talking about Keene, talking about Greenfield Community College, talking about CCV at best.
And the Career Center.
And the Career Center, yeah. Right. So, and we, that's what the purpose behind the support of the Workforce Investment Board is, and that, that some of those action steps down there in policy two are intended to try and tease that out.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. I mean, one of the issues historically in Vermont, but particularly in this region, is that the WIBs, Workforce Investment Boards, are not very strong here. And so, we're, we're sort of pushing against a culture of not doing economic development very well at any level of government in Vermont. Past practice of the state has been patchy and inconsistent and small, and there's no county programs really of any significance. And local communities are small and not very well-resourced, and so therefore don't have it. WIBs in particular have been very weak.
Is that state work?
Workforce Investment Boards. Whereas again, if you go to Ohio or somewhere else, the Workforce Investment Board is a very important organization that has a lot of clout, and it matches workers with businesses.
Do we really need to have that, you think?
Uh...
We're a much smaller state, and our per capita is all very different.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that we've got some serious mismatches between the skillset of school levers and the requirements of employers. And so, that's the kind of thing that it would address.
I'm, I'm looking back...
Just, excuse me, one second. We're after, we're five after eight now, so...
Yep.
But if you had a question or other...
Yeah, I just want to say, in looking back at the imaging Vermont, the feedback, it's very interesting, and the, and the economy chapter, they talk about Vermont as an innovative center. In other words, small-scale industry, artisan, farmstead, and again, the importance of the creative, the creative economy. And this guy here, our secretary of commerce, who talks about how that's very important, and he said you wouldn't think so, because in budgets, people are cutting arts and music and all those things, and yet he really has a feeling that those things are really important, and they, it feeds in...
Right.
To the creative, small business and whatnot. And I'm not sure, it's just general stuff floating around in my head from reading some of those Vermont small-business magazines, and that there needs to be something about that, and where does the Vermont brand come in, into our, building our economy? Because that's, that's important. And even though Vermont on some level doesn't seem to have the population or the right workforce, for somehow, some reason, and even though previous administrations have said Vermont isn't good for business, there is a factor that Vermont is a good place for business, and how do we shift the focus to that? And maybe that has to come in our principle also, I'm not sure. I'm sort of all over the place here, but it's, so it's nothing specific, but there's just some thoughts that I...
That kind of matches that foster development cluster.
Yeah.
Right. That gets picked up later on in the chapter, and makes the link between the working landscape, cultural and heritage tourism, and, thank you to my child, gastronomic tourism.
They add some other clusters in here. Software developers, life sciences, and energy development businesses were said here. Interesting, I thought.
Right, well, the energy development business would match up with the green energy cluster that we've identified.
We don't put software developers anywhere in there, and you always tend to think of that as Chittenden County or Addison County, but...
We don't have, we don't have a strong showing in the high-tech sector.
Yet.
Yet.
Yeah. I mean, and this is a good place to live, the quality of life is good here, the, I mean, the other thing that's hard is the, the housing and rent factor makes it...
Right.
Difficult.
So, go ahead, sorry.
But just, you know, how do you, how do we attract those people to be here?
Are, are we saying that they're not coming at all? Or are we trying to encourage them to come?
No.
Or what are we, what are we saying?
Yeah, how do, how do we encourage more?
More of what?
High-tech jobs.
High-tech and, and very innovative, creative kind of stuff, you know?
I think the commitment, in, in terms of the goals and policies and action steps, the, there's a couple of different things. One is calling out broadband internet access as an infrastructure item.
Yeah.
And that that's an explicit issue. So, that's policy five, and to some extent, goal three. Then, policy two gets at it, because I think that it's plausible that we've got local people at high school age or thereabouts that could be well-suited to that sector, but they're not finding their voice or their form, that expression of their interests here. And so, making it more visible may be beneficial. And then lastly, the kinds of, because high-tech workers are relatively free to locate wherever they choose to, making sure that Brattleboro is well-recognized as a high-quality-of-life location is also beneficial. I think once there's more of a presence of any particular subset of high-tech workers, it'll develop, you know, it'll develop, it'll be, what's the word?
Yeah.
It'll start, it'll start generating its own interest.
Should, should we call that out on here? Because the points that we make now doesn't say anything about that. I mean, it says, let's encourage broadband, okay, for why? For the people in Mount Snow, for the people in Brattleboro, or people visiting from, it's just...
Yeah, and the Vermont, I mean, Vermont, the Marlborough College grad program, I mean, has a specific program around...
Yeah, I've been...
High-tech and computer stuff.
It was interested, I had an earlier action step in here to establish a downtown incubator space hooked up to the internet. But then I was emailing Caleb today, and he goes, oh, we've done that at the, I can't remember, the bridge, is what they call it, at Marlborough College. And I don't know, and he said it's going, okay, you know, it's taking on its own life and all that kind of stuff. So, I actually pulled that out on the basis that there already is.
I think that should go back in there.
I think so too.
Absolutely. Especially after the conversation that we had today with, that, the one that you missed. It was, I, I, I think we'd totally be missing the boat if we didn't say something about technology jobs, especially because they're high-paying jobs and they're low-carbon footprint.
That's right.
They're flexible, you can get big-city wages for, and live here, and it's, it just kind of...
Right, I mean, I took it out partly because I just didn't want to stump, I didn't want to ignore the contribution that Marlborough College had already made with their fledgling program.
Just what, there's always room for more.
Probably not, actually.
Could be recognized.
Yeah, so the, to turn it around would be to recognize it and support that.
But, but these kind of businesses are really, you're right, they're low-impact, they provide good wages, and they're really consistent with the scale here and the ethic of why people come here.
Well, and maybe it doesn't have to say specifically coworking or incubator spaces, maybe it's more along the lines of spaces that are conducive to, there's a whole, I don't know, there's lots of components that go into it, but, and we have the space, but it's, it's really hard to get, you know, to get Comcast to come in and put a wire in your office, it's like you're drilling holes through, it's just, it's, it's just ridiculous. But the coworking idea, maybe that's too specific?
Well, no, that's fine, when the, when, I think I sent you the email as well, when I was asking about, you know, what do we want, or what do we need for the incubator space, more mentors, mentors at all, you know? There's a variety of things that could make an incubator space like that more effective. And the other question I was asking the group was whether we need to pay more attention to the presence of venture capital to get people who've got good ideas off the ground. But, so, I'd be happy to hear what happened in today's meeting, but I guess that's what I'm trying to get at with that. And so, I think it, I think it is missing in this draft, an emphasis on high-tech jobs. All I'd say about that is, both to the north and to the south, there's pretty strong presence of high-tech jobs. And, it doesn't mean that it can't happen here, but there are people, people who are drawn to this part of New England in that field are, they've got a lot of choices.
Yeah.
So, you know...
And every town wants them.
Right, well, I think that's sort of what I'm getting...
Everybody's saying now is what every town wants, you know?
Right.
I'm not saying that...
They don't want dirty jobs either, they want green ones.
Right, but if we want them here, though, we should say...
I'm not saying we shouldn't say it, I'm just saying...
Right.
Yeah. Well, no, it is a reality.
And the quality of life here, I think, is, is, in a lot of ways, is higher than many of those places that are...
That's right, that's right.
So...
And this way, all they have to do is get off at exit one.
That's right.
And you still have good access to New York City and Boston, whereas if you live in the Burlington area, it's a million...
Go no further!
Okay, where are we going with this?
So, one more, one more point to make on the, the tech job, and I'll, I'll even, I'll even ignore my comment earlier.
Ooh!
Policy, adding it somewhere in policy two. If we're, if we're talking jobs, the tech job thing is, is, is the most interesting, I guess, and I see the most potential in that. And that's not just from the job standpoint, but there's a gap in people in their 20s and 30s, because the jobs are in the cities.
Right.
And not, not in every sector, but there, there is a, age-wise, I think it's an opportunity to get the youth to stay here, or come back sooner, maybe?
Yep, okay.
Yeah. Or a range of ages. That's it, I'm done, thank you. Shut up now.
So, you had enough to make some meaningful changes?
Yeah, I think I've got enough. Thanks a lot, that's good.
So, how about municipal facilities and services?
In less than 15 minutes?
Yeah.
You not want to get into it?
Can I, can I ask one question? For municipal facilities? So, a while back, we were sort of talking about, we were talking about the conversation of the overhead that all of these, the buildings have on the town. And one thing we discussed was taking some of these socially and culturally significant buildings and utilizing them during times that they're not being utilized. In winter times, they're being heated and cooled, why not use them on the weekends if nobody's using them? I don't see anything about that in here, and I do think, I realize that it's, it would be a new position that would have to be hired, or more work for somebody else who already has a ton of work. But I just think it's strange...
A new mindset.
Yeah, I just think it's strange that we're ignoring something that could actually be profitable. And, you know, be able to offset some of the costs, rather than just figure out a way to cut the budget, or, you know, work with what we have, or allocate minimal funds for small fixes.
I guess I, when I did this, I did interview department heads. I had a tour of the Gibson-Aiken, which I know is one that you've identified, and you've probably been in there for different activities. I mean, I, you know, there are outside groups that use it, I think that there are, you know, it's pretty well-utilized, you know, with their programs, at least after school, for sure it is during the day, there's lots of senior center activities and, that take place on the different floors as well.
Even the Brattleboro Community Breakfast Group meets there, they're an outside group that uses...
Yeah, yeah. You know, so I don't think that that building was viewed as having a lot of potential, because it's got a lot of use right now.
But if you mentioned those uses, then it would occur to people that they might want to rent public spaces as well.
I think the Gibson, to be, to be fair, the Gibson-Aiken and maybe, the Gibson-Aiken's probably the only one that's got some scope, and that's pretty limited.
River Garden?
River Garden's not directly controlled by the town, it's building about a brattleboro.
The dawn dance, people rent the Gibson-Aiken.
What's that?
The dawn dance.
Right. Yeah, and there are a range of people who already, you know, you know, community groups, for want of a better term, that do utilize those spaces.
Yeah.
And the River Garden has a, I mean, I think if you, if you ask Andrea what the schedule is there, it's utilized a lot. I mean, that's...
They seem to be breaking even. I mean, she's always talking about how...
Well, but it's a big step up from where, from where it was.
From losing.
And it's because of rentals, so...
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not saying they couldn't do more, but I think they're not saying they couldn't do more too, you know?
How, how is it paid tour now? How does, how does it get heated? How's the electricity get turned on? Is that... Is that a, a result of the town funding them?
No.
No? It's the state?
No.
No, it's the.
Is it downtown improvement?
Downtown tax district.
There's a downtown improvement district, which is a levy on the taxes of downtown property owners and then.